Good morning, good morning, good morning. Our Facebook friends and family. Well, that friends and family, good morning, good morning. Good morning to our radio audience at WJGW 107.5 in the beautiful city of Fort Pierce. You see, we started in this segment. And I did this because I wanted to just have conversation. And so my first, no, my second conversation that I'm having is with a young lady from the school board. About two years ago, I met her in a training. And I have to be honest, I did not know what to expect when I went to this training. But because it talked about homelessness, I wanted to be a part of that conversation. And so Kaylee, Kaylee?
Kylie.
Kylie, okay, I want to say Kaylee because...
Everyone knows.
Kylie was the trainer of that session when we talked about children. You know, a lot of times when we focus on homelessness, we deal with the adults. We don't talk about the children that are affected by being homeless and the things that they go through. And she did such an amazing training. And for ever since we had the radio session, I've really been wanting to get her on and had an opportunity to talk with her last Tuesday at one of our meetings, and she has a great, I really want her to introduce herself to you. The other thing I would really like for you to do is tag and share because this is an important conversation. It deals with children in our community that sometimes just go unseen, in my opinion. They really go unseen, even with the parents, because the parents, a lot of times are doing the best they can, but cannot afford those living spaces and keep your judgment to yourself. Because if you ain't never been there, you don't know what you're talking about. But anyway, I'm back. So we want to talk about that. And I want her to talk about her program. It is located in St. Lucie County, but I'm also sure that there are other people in the community, in other states, in other counties throughout the state of Florida, that have some of the same issues that she's going to address today. So come on, introduce yourself.
Thank you Pastor Hazel. So I'm Kylie Fewer. I'm with St. Lucie Public Schools. I'm the district homeless liaison to follow up with the story about the training. It's funny because Pastor Hazel came in and then she sat for a couple of minutes of the training and she got up to leave. And then someone was like, oh, I don't remember how I got brought up. And she was like, oh, this is for students. I don't really work with it. And they were like, you should really stay and like check out the training. So then I did the two and a half hour trainings for all community partners. There was like Boys and Girls Club, Up Center, like anyone that works with families. And you came up afterwards and you were like, I almost left and someone told me to stay and I'm so glad that I stayed. I just, I learned so much about what is here, offered here.
Yes.
So that was really one of those like career accomplishments because then you've been such a support. Anytime I see you out anywhere, you're like, the next training she's doing, you should definitely go to. So I really appreciate that support. It means the world, especially from, from you. So yes, so the, it's called the McKinney Vento Program. So it's a federal program and it's named after a law, the federal law that protects and governs the program. So it was started in 1987 by two senators that wanted to develop some kind of law to protect students that were living in homeless situations so they could still obtain their, their education.
Wow.
So it's in every school district, in every state. Not all of them are as thorough or as great as what we have here in St. Lucie, but...
And we have the program, I can tell you, not many do.
We do, and it's such a good feeling when families have been involved in the program and then they leave to go to Orange County or another state and they call back and they just let me know, like, we miss your program. Like you did so much there and we thought they were all like you and they're not all like you, you know, some of them are good or they do something different. But we are really something special here because of all the community support and the extra services we're able to provide our families in St. Lucie.
Right.
So the program supports the educational rights of students experiencing homelessness. So the first thing you have to talk about is the two different federal definitions of homelessness. So all the way up at the federal level, you've got the HUD definition, which is literal street homeless, they cannot have a roof over their head. And then you've got the Federal Department of Education definition. Now neither definition is the correct definition. There isn't one that supersedes the other. They're both federal definitions. And the education definition includes, there's four different categories. There's living in emergency tower temporary shelter, any kind of shelter. So for us, it's safe space, hope for families, anything around here. Then you've got living in hotels or motels due to economic hardship. So it can't be the families that are living hotels, you know, until their landscaping's done at the new house they're building. It's the families that have been evicted, they can't afford anything else, they can't save up that first last security, they end up in a hotel. The street homeless. So we've got families that are squatting in vacant houses, they're staying in tents. You know, we had a family at Jonathan Dickinson State Park last year and they would stay there. You know, a lot of the campsites only let them stay 10 days. So she was having to do that campground for 10 days. Then they would move to the savannas for 10 days. And then they would move to another campground for 10 days. The same with like the hotels, a lot of hotels don't let you stay past 28 days because then you get like renter rights. So it's harder to get the families out. So they're moving hotels every month. And then the last category is our doubled up or couch surfing category. So it's usually about 80% of our families are living doubled up, they're in another person's home, their name's not on any of the bills, they can be asked to leave at any point. That category usually has the most instability in their life, even though they qualify for the least resources. Because technically they have a roof over their head, so they don't count in the, for any of like the housing resources, because they are technically housed. But that doesn't look like, you know, they're sharing an apartment with someone. A lot of times that's them living in the living room, like a family of four, five, six, eight sometimes, living in the office in a house or all cramped in one bedroom. You know, those students and those families are a lot less likely to talk about the issues going on in the house because they don't want to rock the boat, they don't want to be asked to leave. So you see a lot more of those like emotional issues on the kids in those situations. And then of course, the families don't qualify for a lot of the housing services because they're not literal street homelessness. So that really, I feel like that group gets the short end of the stick and that's the majority of our families. You know, sometimes they're living with their grandparents in a 55 and up community and they have to like be quiet and the kids aren't allowed to play outside and they just really, they get really limited there. So the program is in place to make sure they can start school immediately. So in St. Lucie County, to start in school, you have to have your birth certificate and two proofs of address. A lot of times the families come and they obviously don't have a proof of address and they don't have the birth certificate. So the program provides the right that we start them immediately and then we work with the parents for the first 30 days to get the birth certificate or whatever documents they are unable, they didn't have. The students are also enrolled in free breakfast, free lunch within 24 hours.
Wow.
So that right there, sometimes that's enough to get the kid, okay, at least I know they're fed, you know, twice a day, five days a week, and you know, and the parents can kind of figure out what they're going to do. We provide transportation to their school of origin. So this one really makes the biggest difference in their lives. If a student is attending a school in Fort Pierce and say the family's been, you know, renting the house or the apartment and they get evicted and they have to stay with grandma in Vero Beach, or they're going to go to a hotel in Stewart that they can afford, they can remain at that Fort Pierce school, their school of origin, for the duration of their homeless episode with, with transportation. So we will bus them back and forth so the kids can have some kind of normalcy in their life. Because like I said, some of the ones in the campgrounds, hotels, even the doubled up families, sometimes they're moving, they're emailing me, leaving my voicemails every weekend, okay, we're at this address now. So I can only imagine the toll it would take on the students and the, the learning loss if every other week they're having to switch schools. They would never develop relationships. And then we know what it looks like when we look at like dropout rates compared to like success as an adult. So being able to provide that stability of their school assignment with the transportation, because sometimes the families don't have cars. So if they're all the way out in Stewart, they have no idea how they're going to get their kid back to St. Lucie Elementary, whether it be whatever Fort Pierce school they're in. So that right there, to me, is the most impactful part of the program. Beyond that, we also provide school supplies.
I want to go back to that real quick because at one point, Image did serve as a shelter and we had families there for, you know, for, for a period of time. And it was so important that, this is one of the things that I did not know about homeless children, to be honest with you, or sheltered children in these shelters, is that whatever school that they're in, in St. Lucie County, that if they're in Vero in a shelter or have like you say, go to grandma's house or cousin's house or whoever house, they can still keep going to that same school because our district, St. Lucie County, provides transportation for them to that school to keep that normalcy going.
Right.
And like you said, I can't even imagine how hard it can be. My heart goes out because when you talk about the number of children that are homeless based on the federal definition for the school district, that number was large to me.
Yes.
It was. It threw me back because I didn't, I had never heard that before, number one. And number two, my brain just could not wrap around that we would have so many children that, and I want to say this, and this is why I want you to tag and share, we were talking about the McKinney Vento program here in St. Lucie County, but it's all over the United States because it's a federal program for children that meet the definition of homelessness. And a lot of times, even the parents don't know that they meet this definition of homelessness. And so we just want to bring that awareness that if you are housing someone with the heart of God and you're letting them stay there and they're sleeping in whatever accommodation that you can give them, that these children qualify for this program and there's so many services that they can, that they can receive as a result of it. You know, we talked about the family that lives in, in a campground and have to move every 10 days, or that one that lives in a hotel because it's all that they can afford and they're there for 28 days and they gotta go to another hotel. Why? Because the hotels want to make sure that they'll establish residence today.
Right.
For number one. And you know, you talk about that one that's on the streets. Can you, sometimes I, I think about that. I recently was in contact with a mom who has two little boys who I, I met. And, and she's in that same, in that same circumstance, you know, and I watch these babies because just imagine being in a house and you've got three or four kids and you're living in the living room and the other family living how they're living and thank God for that, but some of the things that the children go through. You know, sometimes children can mean some mean little things now, you know, who all children want, so hey. And what those babies can go through. So even with that piece, do you also provide counseling? Does this program provide counseling for these children as well, if needed? Because I can only imagine that sometime the anger comes out, or they're so, they're so enthralled in within themselves that it's hard to get them to socialize or be a part of the school family.
Yeah. So we have 19-ish, somewhere around 19, school district, social workers. And they're all master level social workers. So they've gone through whatever licensing, training, you know, get to that level. So they each have, between some of the larger schools, I might have just one school they're assigned to and they're there all the time, or sometimes they have two schools, split half the week at one school and half the week the other. So they're aware of all the McKinney Vento students at their school so they can pull them out. Or if a family reaches out to me, you know, we had a McKinney Vento family a couple of years ago and mom would stay in a not great hotel with them during the week. And then on the weekends, sometimes she'd go send them to live with her sister or something to get them out of that, you know, that hotel situation. There was a tragedy. One of the siblings was killed over the weekend. So mom, we had a great relationship, like whatever, you know, she needed, she knew she could reach out and I, if I couldn't provide it, I could find someone in the community that could kind of help her with that. She had three students.
Wow.
So she reached out Monday, told me what happened. She was like, I need to get the other two like counseling. I don't know when they're coming back to school. So I think I referred them to Treasure Coast Hospice. You know, usually they have insurance, so we can refer them to whatever community agency if it's not going to be school-based for counseling. If they don't have insurance, we also have a case manager now, so she'll walk them through that process, kind of help them apply for Medicaid or whatever it may be. And then last resort, we do have funding so we can help offset some of those fees if they need temporary counseling. So yeah, it's, you know, sometimes we think, you know, the program is there to remove any barriers to education. And at first you think like school supplies or like getting them to school, but sometimes it's, it's so much more for these families.
Yes.
So we had a family and it was a single mom and she had three kids and one of them was like a second grader at an elementary school. So she needed to make sure she got him to the bus. Well, she also had a four-year-old. Four-year-old had clubbed feet. So at some point, the second grader was struggling with attendance. So I reached out to her and I was like, hey, what's going on? I see that he's been missing a lot of school. Like, is there something I can help with? Have you moved again? Do you need me to set up a new bus? She was like, no. The four-year-old just had surgery, so he cannot walk. He's too heavy for me to carry to walk the second grader to the bus stops. We haven't been going. But it's not, she, you know, she didn't really relate it to education, like how can you help that? You can't come carry my kid.
Right.
So what we did was we partnered with a community agency, found a stroller, like one of the little umbrella strollers. She was able to put the four-year-old in that and get the student to the bus stop and attendance wasn't an issue anymore. So it's, it's the creative, it's out of the box, it's whatever you're going through. And some of the families are great about they reach out or I will reach out and check on them and they let us know kind of what's going on and then we figure it out. We remove that barrier because none of these students' situations, it's not their fault. It's nothing they did to end up in this situation. So to then, you know, punish them or have them struggling in school, it's just awful. And you know, while I don't, we don't cure homelessness with the school district and with the McKinney Vento program, we can provide them with their education, get them through to graduation. We can support them through college if that's what they want to do, to hopefully break that homelessness cycle and become like, you know, contributing members of this community and want to give back. So one of the big parts of the program is if, for, this is Florida specific, but if you are homeless during your senior year, you qualify for up to four years tuition-free at any of the 27 Florida college system colleges.
Wow.
Yeah, so, and luckily IRSC is one of them. So if we can get them through to graduation, high school, right? Which our graduation rate's usually around 99%.
That's awesome.
So yeah, we had 125 seniors last year and I think only one did not graduate with their cohort. I think they were like a summer graduation a little bit later. But we get them through, we work with the schools, whatever it is that's in their way to graduate and we get them there. And then I let them all know multiple times during their high school career, like you can go to college for free. You can get your four years with no debt. They get their financial aid money back, like you, you can do it. It's not going to be, you know, a lot of them are like, I can't afford college, my mom didn't go to college. That's why you don't have to afford it. It's going to be, especially like IRSC, we have such a smooth transit, like process with them now. They come get a form, sign, notarize with me, they take that to the cashier, it takes care of their classes. So they can get out, you know, finish their bachelor's with no student loans, no student debt. And then, you know, hopefully, and I know it's not for everybody, but the bachelor's degree is a really great thing to fall back on if you don't know what you're going to do. And all it took was your time and effort. And some of the kids are just so grateful to be able to do that because they never thought they'd be able to go to college.
Right.
So that's kind of what I try to put a lot of focus on with our high schoolers too, like this doesn't have to be the rest of your life. You can get out, you can teach, like you can get that four-year degree and come back and teach here and be making enough to, you know, get yourself and your family like out of this cycle. So that's another thing we try to like push a lot.
We have youth pastors. We have the senior pastors, we have pastors and we have ushers. Ushers get a lot of information too. Now y'all know y'all ushers get a lot of information, okay. How can we be that, that, that person that you're talking about for a family that is experiencing this, that maybe come into our, that's a part of our congregations or, you know, a lot of us do a lot of work on the outreach work. How can we be that person now? Is there, is there information that you can give us? I got information, I go to an office on, but anyway, information that you can give so that they know that they can contact you. And the one thing that if you don't know about, if you don't know this about me, I'm only going to bring people into this conversation that I trust. Because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, I want you to know that she's sitting here not because she paid me to come here or that somebody told me she had to come here. She's here because I went through the training and I was so impressed about the work that she does and the care that she gives to the students who are experiencing homelessness. I don't know if anybody understands that, but how it is to pick up and go, you come from school and instead of going home, you go into a car and you gotta sit there or go to the park and play and, and do these things that, because you don't have a home to go to. How a child feels in doing that. So she's here because Pastor Hazel trusts her. And I trust the program that she, that she worked for with the St. Lucie County, I mean, St. Lucie County School System. I just thank God for it. So again, speak to us as faith leaders. What can we do in order to reach out to you where we know that we have a family that is experiencing homelessness and we want them to get them the, the best care that they can, that they can receive?
Yes. So if you have a family that has come to you and let you know that they're living in one of those situations, or you think they might be, or they've asked for resources, you can go to the St. Lucie Public Schools website and if you just search homeless up at the top, it'll bring you to the homeless page. It's going to have a link to the form. It's a one-page referral form for families to enroll in the program. Or it's got my email address listed as well, so you can have the family reach out, you can reach out on the family's behalf, whatever they're more comfortable with. We also have flyers and posters. So if any of you wanted those for your organizations, we can put those up and then the families that are in there can read it and then, you know, take down the phone number and reach out themselves if they, you know, too prideful, which is fine. So that's another thing we do at the schools, the Health Department, Boys and Girls Club, they've all got posters up. So if they are still, you know, because a lot of times you expect the kids to look dirty or disheveled or disorganized and they're not. Sometimes they're pulling up in a decent car because they don't have a mortgage or rent payment, all they have is a car payment. The kids are clean, like they're figuring out ways and so you would never guess that they're living in their car. So having those posters and the exposure for the families and then they can read them and be like, oh, that is me, I'm in one of those situations. And they can just reach out, yeah, without having to divulge.
Right.
So if anyone wants posters, we've got that as well. I do, come talk to whoever. So if you want to do a small training for your group, you know, I can do that. Our next community training is going to be on May 29th. It's going to be at the school district, so I'll be sending that link out for anyone to register, learn more about the program, how to refer, like different projects, you know. There's something to do. We partner with a nonprofit out of Vero Beach that provides, it's called Little Birthday Angels, so they provide birthday bags to our students.
Wow.
And we just started doing that with the high schools, I think last year. We had this one high schooler, I want to say he was 17, and he, they get a huge duffel bag that's got everything from like a lap desk to a couple of school supplies to like a football wallet, like hygiene stuff. And everything's wrapped in birthday wrapping paper. And he, the school counselor distributes them. So she brought him in the office and he opened up every gift in that bag. It was like so excited to show her. It had been the first gifts he'd received since he was like eight or nine years old for his birthday.
Wow.
So he's on his own, like he is, he couch serves from this friend, his parents kicked him out, I think when he turned 15 or 16. So he's one of our unaccompanied homeless youth, which we have about 100 of. But that, that nonprofit is able to provide that and make that kid feel special on their birthday.
That's amazing.
Yeah, where a lot of them, they try not to talk about the birthday, right? Because then their peers are going to ask, well, what'd you do? What'd you do? And it's like, nothing, I live in my car, I'm staying on this couch. So being able for, to partner with them and they can provide that, that special feeling and that light and that shine on their birthday is just absolutely amazing. And that's, that's one of the special parts about St. Lucie, like they may go to another district and go, well, where's my birthday bag? If they don't have that program, we're very, very blessed and lucky here to have organizations.
Definitely.
Yeah.
If posters, definitely getting posters, passing them around to some persons that I know, that I know love to do this, to put it up. And because again, like you say, you know, sometimes we just don't want you to know.
Right.
But if you have the information there and they can see it and read it and take a phone number down, then they are more susceptible with that, susceptible with that. So I am very, very glad about that. And I tell you, you're going to have to come back again, of course.
Yeah.
But yeah, for those that may want training, you really want her to come. You really want her to come to your organization or be a part of the training that she's having. It really opened my eyes. And, and I'm very honest because I was looking at my watch and, and you know, my parents said, you've got other things to do. And I was about to leave and I don't even know who suggested that I stayed, but I am very glad I did. And because it is just an amazing program.
Thank you.
It really is an amazing program. And definitely want to do everything that I can and hopefully that you will also do whatever you can to support this program. You know, she talked about this organization, what was the name of the organization again that did the birthday?
Little Birthday Angels.
Little Birthday Angels. She talked about them. I wanted that name to be repeated again. But you know, maybe there's a church or a nonprofit or a for-profit organization that wants to come along beside Kaylee.
Kylie.
Kylie.
That's all right.
And, and just partner with her. You may not be able, you know, maybe they would do a little something, maybe want to give maybe a, a gift certificate so these children can go get some socks or some underwear or, or different things like that, you know, to, to be able to support them. You may even have the ability to hire and can partner with her to say, okay, on, you know, get in contact with some of your family, families that are looking for jobs and this is what we're offering. Why are we doing this? Because we want to be a hand up. The Lord asked a question one time and he said, asked Cain, when it came down to Abel, you know, where is thy brother? And he said, and I'm my brother's keeper. And I want to let all of us know that yes, we are our brother's keeper. We may not be able to do a lot of big things, but the little things really does matter. You know, one of the things that we talked about in that training is that some of the children are willing to come and talk about their experience of, of being homeless. But now if you bring them, you want to bless them now. Because you know Bible says, you know, that a work is worthy, a work is higher. And so we want to be able to bless them. This is an opportunity to show the love of Christ. This is that opportunity to show the love of Christ. And what a great way to do it, by just helping meet needs. She talked about this 15-year-old who parents put him out, don't even worry about why he was put out. The fact is, that's a 15-year-old child couch surfing, surfing, trying to finish school. And so those are the things that we want to, to look at and see what we can do to help. Okay, we got a few more minutes. So anything you want to share with us, that maybe you might need, or something that you have a vision that you want to do, that hopefully we will be able to help you do.
Oh, my wish list is always very long, but you know, right now we do a lot of collecting of school supplies because we make sure they're all ready. We do a big back to school event the very end of July, so they have everything that they need to start school, just like everyone else with the new shoes, with a backpack that doesn't have a broken zipper, you know, all the school supplies on their list. So if you want to do a collection, that'd be great, for spiral notebooks, backpacks, whatever, whatever school supply you want to, to collect. Also, we need volunteers for that event. So we set up in the large boardroom in the school district office, all the shoes, because a lot of these kids have never gone shoe shopping. So they come in, we've got them all laid out by size and they can try them on, because sometimes you ask them their shoe size and they go, I don't know, I've never had new shoes. They have no idea what their shoe size is and they're used to just getting whatever's given to them. So we give them an option, like this is your size, we'll, we'll size you. And then which ones do you like from here? Try them on, like see what it's like. So we do that big event. We also need volunteers because we also need to make sure every language is covered so that they can communicate with the parents and all that. So we usually have like 10 volunteers just on the shoe department, just to, you know, help them try on the shoes and do they want Hello Kitty versus Pokemon, like whatever. And then we do holiday bags. So we pack these little drawstring bags around the holidays and give them out before winter break that have like new socks, a little couple new school supplies. And then we do hygiene items and we do fun items. And then we do hygiene items and we do fun items. So the younger, like K through five, they may get coloring books, crayons, matchbox cards, and this fits in a drawstring bag. The older students get like journals, um, they get wallets, they get water bottles, sunglasses, anything like that. So if you want to collect anything, uh, around October, November, you're more than willing to do that. We usually have two days that we need volunteers for that. But really like from this group, I think the biggest thing is just the awareness. And if families reach out to you, because a lot of them are closer with their church family than they are at school, um, letting them know if they're in that situation, like who they can reach out to and that there is help with the school piece of it. So.
I think the biggest part too is for us to get those posters and put them up.
Yeah.
Because a lot of times, like you say, you can't tell.
Right.
You know, and if the spirit of discernment isn't working, you won't know. And, and so they have that information up there so that they can come in and get it. I do want to tell you that you are more than welcome to come to WJGW one oh seven point five anytime you need to.
Thank you.
About your fundraisers because I think that we really want to partner with you to be able to do that. And, um, we'll get with Lewis, of course, and he, he's a weird, don't ask me. And so that we can, we can put those things out over a period of time and hopefully we can get those, get people to, to, to donate.
That'd be great.
Image has a lot of things. I'm looking already. I'm like, "Oh, okay. I got this. We can give that to you." And so to be able to do that and when you need volunteers, I'm telling you, you have an open door. Anytime you just let me know.
Thank you, Pastor.
So that way you can come in because we want to be a part of the solution. And we want to do it in a way that is impactful, but at the same time respectful.
Right.
And this is another thing that I love about this program because it fits both of those. And it definitely shows compassion. And so I'm very grateful to you for that. Um, again, we just thank God for you. Give me the name of that program again because you know our.
McKinney Vento.
McKinney Vento.
Yes.
Now, I'm gonna tell you, um, if you know someone or if you're listening and you identify with what we talk about, you can always call the station. What's the number again? You can always call Pastor Hazen, seven seven two three five nine nine six five three. Palmer with foolishness now, but Palmer if you have a need. And, and we will get you in contact with her and that way, uh, we can get the needs met. I am so grateful to you. I am so grateful to the St. Lucie County School Board for having this program and for the faith. They don't do everything right, but they do do some stuff right. So good too.
Yes.
And this is one of those good programs and we definitely want to support it. And, uh, again, you have an open door.
Thank you. Thank you.
All you guys need is Palmer.
All right.
Uh, and that way we can help organize the fund, not organize, we can help support the fundraiser and get into supplies for the kids. I love the fact that, you know, you, you, you give them little bags with different little things and it, and it makes them feel special.
It does.
And who doesn't want to feel special?
Right.
Who does not want to feel special? So we definitely want to partner with you on that. Um, and, uh, hey, you have an open door.
Thank you.
Uh, we want to tell you, thank you again to our faithful friends and family for listening to us, our radio audience at WJGW one oh seven point five in the beautiful city of Fort Pierce and worldwide. You know, we talk about St. Lucie County today because this is where we are located. But as Kaylee.
Kylie.
Kylie. I'm gonna call her Kayla. As she has stated before, it is all over the United States. So if you know someone, all you gotta do is go to your school board website and type in homelessness. Let's get them the resources that they need. They don't need judgment. They're already walking in it. They just need a hand up. So we ask that you tag and share. Amen. When we come back again, uh, we're gonna do some fundraising in the name of Jesus. God bless you. God bless you and God bless you again. Again, you can go to, uh, to the App Store, amen, for the iOS, Google Play Store for, um, your, uh, devices and type in one oh seven five FM, WJGW. Download the app and take us everywhere you go. Remember this, it may not be you today, but it may be you tomorrow. Don't judge. Let's show compassion and love. God bless.